Welcome to the May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Carrboro Town Council.
Welcome to the May 21st, 2024, meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. We are all present and accounted for tonight. Nobody's traveling. Everybody's here in person. And we'll start this meeting as we always do. I think we have, yes, there she is, Liza Wolf Francis, who graced us with a very nice poem, I'm sure. Welcome.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Hello, everybody. This is one of my poems, "Missing Stories." Last March, my father told me a story, as if I had heard it countless times, about the day he flew a killer whale to Hawaii, when in fact, I had never even imagined a whale in the air. An Air Force mission, two pilots, my father before he was a father, and another man, who I imagine also tells these stories now in his older years. The whole crew had parachutes strapped to their backs in case the whale realized it was literally a fish out of water and thrashed its tail and the plane to the ground. But luckily, the whale was still. It lay in a sling as people poured water over its flesh and kept wet towels over its eyes. Its trainer petted it and talked to it, saying there were blue seas waiting ahead in paradise. How many stories precede us that we do not know? Stories on the brink of leaving us, told as if they had been told over and over again. Stories of whales flying in airplanes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Always good. Thank you, Liza. We have, before I get to the proclamations, we have a resolution that is going to be presented to us by Councilmember Randy Haven O'Donnell.
Okay, good evening. This is a resolution in opposition to House Bill 237. It's an unmasking bill. Whereas since 1953, North Carolina has adhered to state general statutes on masking, the purpose of which is to restrict secret societies such as the Ku Klux Klan to disguise or conceal the identity of the wearer. And whereas, according to the Coats Canon, North Carolina government law, provides six exemptions to these prohibitions that presently allow the wearing of masks, hoods, or other devices that conceal identity. In response to COVID-19, a sixth exemption was added in 2020, and it states, exemptions from provisions of Article Six, any person wearing a mask for the purpose of ensuring the physical health or safety of the wearer or others. And the North Carolina Health Exemption was initially set to sunset on August 1st, 2020. The North Carolina Legislature subsequently removed the sunsetting of the exemption to make the provision permanent. Whereas, in response to COVID-19 pandemic, consistent with the North Carolina State Department of Health and Human Services, on October 9th, 2021, the town of Carrboro required all employees and visitors accessing town facilities to wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And since that law has had an exemption for people wearing masks for health and safety reasons. And whereas, the North Carolina House Bill 237, titled "Unmasking Mobbs and Criminals", allows some exemptions to the unmasking bill for the secret society or organizations to wear masks or hoods in a parade or demonstration if they obtain permission, or by a person wearing a traditional holiday costume in season. The bill allows the exemption for clowns to mask as part of their professional work. In essence, a cancer patient can't wear a mask, yet a clown performer can. And whereas, the strike through of the existing law removes mask-wearing for health and safety exemptions for the most vulnerable of our citizens by health, immunocompromised, age, disability, or other concern for protecting the health or safety of the wearer and/or the health of their loved ones. And whereas, the May 15th, 2024, Health Exemption Six, Strike Through of, quote, "Any person wearing a mask for the purpose of ensuring the physical health or safety of the wearer or others," end quote, action on the part of the North Carolina Republican-controlled State Senate now reads, quote, "Individuals will no longer be able to wear masks in public for health or safety reasons," end quote. Whereas, June 7th, 2022, the town of Carrboro adopted the Comprehensive Plan with Twin Foundational Pillars. In March of 2023, the town of Carrboro adopted the Race Equity Assessment Lens, REAL, R-E-A-L, tools which inform and embed equity in town governance decision-making, and the decision-making for racial equity, the DRE tool, D-R-E. And pocket questions that ask, what are the racial impacts? Who will experience burden? Who will benefit? House Bill 237 will desperately impact and burden the most vulnerable of Carrboro citizens. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the town of Carrboro Council, in the interest of ensuring the continued health, safety, and well-being of its citizens, stand in opposition to North Carolina House Bill 237, urge our legislators not to advance House Bill 237, not to pass the bill as currently written, and press our local municipal and county elected representative bodies to stand in opposition to the bill this day, May 21st, 2024. And I'd like to move the item.
I'll second. Thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell, for that resolution. So it has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution passes six to zero.
Thank you, council. And council helped edit. I just want everyone to know.
Good evening. So we have two proclamations. The first one is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, Advancing Quality of Life for All. If I could get our Public Works Director, Kevin, come on up. Good to see you. Whereas, this year marks the 64th Annual Observance of National Public Works Week, and the theme of this year's observance, Advancing Quality of Life for All, illustrates how public works professionals contribute to and enhance the quality of life in all the communities that they proudly serve. And whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health and well-being of the people of Carrboro. And whereas, Carrboro Public Works makes important contributions to the community by providing reliable, solid waste collection, loose leaf collection, oh, I'm sorry, street greenway and right-of-way maintenance, snow removal, stormwater facility maintenance, mowing and landscaping of town properties and rights of way, tree trimming and removal, ball field preparation and maintenance, facility maintenance, vehicle and equipment maintenance, cemetery maintenance, and cemetery plot sales, and the list goes on and on, and more. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are a team of employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other facilities and services for our citizens. And whereas, the accomplishments of Carrboro Public Works in the past year include, among many others, continue to provide construction administration on the 203 project, a building designed to LED gold standards as it moves towards completion. Continue to incorporate the town's climate goals by providing construction administration on the installation of the rooftop solar photovoltaic array on Fire Station One, and Public Works reducing Carrboro's greenhouse gas by an estimated 16%. Replace 1,000 watt high-pressure sodium light bulbs at Anderson Community Park with energy-efficient LED lighting. And continuation of the compost program, composting over 2,900 tons of leaves in fiscal year 2023. Initiated the Westwood Cemetery Master Plan, diversifying interment options and enhancing the property. Installation of ADA-compliant restroom at Bem Street Facility. Facilitated the town's recertification as a Tree City USA for its 39th year. Continued to maintain, diagnose, and repair the town's 108 vehicles and 70 pieces of equipment, ranging from the largest ladder truck down to the smallest two-cycle equipment. Completed annual street resurfacing and asphalt repairs, including addressing trip hazards from root damage on Francis Shetley and Liba Cotton bikeways. Whereas, in the 2024 Biannual Community Survey, Carrboro Public Works earned residents' highest ratings of satisfaction, with 91.4% of residents indicating they were satisfied or very satisfied with the department's services. And now, therefore I, Barbara M. Fushie, Mayor of the Town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2024, to be Public Works Week in Carrboro. I encourage all residents to thank and celebrate the town's public works employees and to recognize the importance of public works professionals and public works programs for protecting our health, safety, advancing quality of life for all, and making Carrboro a great place to live this, the 20th day of May 2024. And they do a lot and deserve the recognition every single day. So I will give this to... Present this to Kevin. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you, everybody. The town of Carrboro is very fortunate to have a really great team of employees down at Public Works. They work tirelessly, often behind the scenes and after hours, to make these things happen and keep things moving in the town. Very honored to be part of that team and honored to accept this proclamation and recognition on their behalf. They're a really great team. I'm lucky to have them. Thank you.
The next proclamation is for Pride Month. And I do want to acknowledge Councilmembers Frey and Posada for their editing and additional information for the 2024 Pride Month proclamation. Thank you so much. Now, if I could get Councilmember Posada to just mosey on up here. He is the interim executive director for Equality and C, as well as one of our council members. He's very busy. Always somewhere doing something. That's Councilmember Posada. Busy. Pride Month. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ Pride Month is celebrated nationally each year in June to commemorate the Stonewall Riots of 1969. And whereas, the town of Carrboro has a proud history of advancing the rights of LGBTQ+ people, including adding sexual orientation to the list of protected categories in the town's Equal Employment Opportunity Policy in 1990, being the first municipality in the state to create a domestic partner registry in 1994, having 28 consecutive years of LGBTQ+ mayors, after being the first to elect a gay mayor in 1995, and later the first to elect a lesbian mayor in 2013, and the first to elect a second gay mayor in 2021, being among the first to support civil marriage for same-sex couples, and inclusion of LGBTQ+ families, and comprehensive immigration reform, being the first to call for repeal of the discriminatory House Bill Two in 2016, being among the first with the towns of Hillsborough and Chapel Hill in Orange County to adopt a local ordinance prohibiting discrimination in public accommodations and employment in 2021, being the first to elect a Latinx LGBTQ+ official in 2022, and being the first to elect a non-binary official in 2023. And whereas, there is much physical and psychological violence inflicted on LGBTQ+ people. 2021 was the deadliest year on record for trans women. LGBTQ+ people, especially trans people and LGBTQ+ people of color, experienced disproportionately high rates of poverty. Over 30% of trans and gender non-conforming people have experienced homelessness. LGBTQ+ youth make up a disproportionate number of homeless youth in the United States. And LGBTQ+ youth experience high rates of bullying, harassment, and parental rejection, with accompanying heightened risk of depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. And whereas, the General Assembly continues to target LGBTQ+ people through laws such as House Bill 574, which prevents trans youth from participating in middle and high school sports, House Bill 808, which bans best-practice medical care for trans youth, and Senate Bill 49, North Carolina's own Don't Say Gay bill. And whereas, the town of Carrboro is committed to defending the human rights of LGBTQ+ people and ensuring that all residents, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression are treated with respect and dignity. And whereas, in 2023, Carrboro received a high score of 95 on the Municipal Equality Index, a measure of how inclusive the town's laws, policies, and services are of LGBTQ+ people who live and work here. And whereas, the town of Carrboro and the town of Chapel Hill have long been partners in affirming their opposition to discrimination, prejudice, homophobia, and transphobia, and we share a commitment to creating a place where all are welcome. And whereas, the town of Carrboro and the town of Chapel Hill will co-host Small Town Pride, a series of celebrations that will include community partner events like Orgula?
Orguia.
What?
Orguia.
Yeah, he says it better than me. Latinx Pride on Saturday, June 8th, and culminating in a Carrboro Pride Dance Party on Friday, June 28th. Now, therefore I, Barbara M. Fushie, Mayor of the Town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 2024 to be Pride Month in Carrboro. I encourage all residents of Carrboro to celebrate and affirm their LGBTQ+ family members, friends, and neighbors to take action to defend their human rights and to participate in Small Town Pride events in Carrboro and Chapel Hill throughout the month. So we're always excited about this proclamation. So I welcome Councilmember Posada to the microphone for some comments.
All right. Councilmembers and Madam Mayor, thank you so much for your proclamation. As you mentioned, one of the many hats I wear is currently served as the interim executive director for Equality North Carolina, which is the oldest statewide advocacy group working for the lived equality of LGBTQ+ people in the United States. We are an organization that has worked for over 45 years for our community and have been at the forefront of a lot of these battles that, Mayor, you mentioned the proclamation. But we have named the slate of hate from some of our less-than-welcoming but we have named the Slate of Hate from some of our less-than-welcoming legislators in the General Assembly. So, and one of the things that I'm extremely proud of, not only as I said on that dais, but as I am a resident of this community before that, is of Carrboro's longstanding support of the LGBTQ+ community and its willingness to always be at the forefront. I am more than proud to live and serve in this community, and thank you all, my colleagues, and especially you, Madam Mayor, for this proclamation. For everyone at home and everyone here, there's still much work to do. I think all of us have a place when it comes to securing our communities and the safety of our folks. So please utilize or have fun on Pride Month. Come out to the events. We're going to have, Orguia is going to be the bomb. It's going to be great.
June 1st. I forgot to mention.
Oh, it's June 8.
No, the June 1 event in Chapel.
Oh, yes, June 1. Thank you. June 1, we're going to have Small Town Pride over at Chapel Hill. There's going to be a big old party. There's going to be a little bit of scum speeches, a little bit of marching. You come back here on the 8th. We'll have Orguia right out here at Carrboro Commons. We'll have some drag queens. We'll have some fun. And throughout the month, we're also going to be having advocacy events. So if you want to join any of that, go to equalitync.org. With that, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everybody in Carrboro.
Thank you, Councilmember Posada. Announcement of upcoming meetings, Mr. Joyner.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Just want to read out some of the upcoming town meetings. The Racial Equity Commission and Truth Plaque Task Force Joint Meeting will take place May 22, which is tomorrow at 6:00 PM here in Town Hall. Also, there's Affordable Housing Advisory Commission, which will take place May 29 at 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. There's also a Carrboro Tourism Development Authority Meeting, which is June 3 at 3:00 PM, and that meeting will be virtually. And the next town council meeting will be June 4 here at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Councilmembers, any other announcements on the dais? Randy? So we're down to public comment. Are there sheets? I feel like most may be signed up for the public hearing item. So it looks like most that are here are signed up for the 400 North Greensboro Street rezoning, and we will take your comment during the public hearing, which is going to come up next. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on something not related to 400 North Greensboro? So I'll call an order when we get to the public hearing, the public, which is going to be here shortly, as a matter of fact. Items on the consent agenda are part of a normal, are part of normal town business. They're also submitted in accordance with established procedure. There will be no discussion of the items unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Item number one on the consent agenda will need to be pulled for the approval of May and June minutes so that certain council members can abstain from the vote. Are there other items that the council would like pulled? If not, we're just going to do, what is that, 2 through 9, all in one motion. We'll pull one for the obvious reason.
I move the consent agenda 1 through 29.
Thank you so much. All right. So it's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Town Manager Tony, can you read number one, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. Item number one on the consent agenda is the approval of minutes from town council meetings held on May 9, 16, 23, June 6, 13, and 15 of 2023.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Haven O'Donnell had a correction there or a question about one of those.
And I had sent some minor typo edits to folks, but on the June 6 minutes, line number 91 names a trail that is, I think it's misnamed, and I would like the proper name to be...
Is that Long Branch?
It's a Long Branch. What is that? Do you know what it is?
That's the Northern Greenway, is it not?
Yep.
Is that what Long Branch is?
I'm not sure, because I think Charlie Branch. So if we could look into that and have that corrected.
Clarification.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
So could I get a motion, please, to approve item number one, the minutes? And Frey and Merrill would not be voting on these minutes.
I'll move them then.
Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. We are done with the consent agenda. Thank you. So we're down to the public hearing. Down to the public hearing, Town Manager. Tony?
Yes, there's one item that requires a public hearing. This is a legislative public hearing for conditional zoning at 400 North Greensboro Street. The town has received a petition to amend the zoning classification for the property at 400 North Greensboro Street from CT to BIGCZ for the purpose of developing a three-story multifamily residential project. The town council must receive public input before reaching a decision on this request. And so our transportation planner, Tina Moon, will give an overview of this item.
So while Tina is on her way up, welcome, Tina. Want to open the public hearing, and we'll hear from staff, and that is Tina.
Thank you. Pull up our materials.
And while Tina is looking, so after town staff, I think the applicant is here. If the applicant will come up, and then we'll get to the public comment about this item.
Sorry about that little delay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that introduction. I'm Tina Moon with the Planning Department. And again, the purpose of the item tonight is for you to receive public comment. A necessary requirement is part of a legislative decision matter. You can see, for those folks who aren't as familiar with this project, this is a picture of the property in question. You can see North Greensboro Street running to the north, and you can see Parker Street over here to the side. So this is the subject property right here. I thought it might be helpful to have an outline of how we might like to proceed this evening. As you've just opened to the public hearing, thank you, we'll have the staff presentation. The applicant is here, along with his agent, and there'll be an applicant presentation, then have the full public comment period. And again, since this is a legislative public hearing, there's no need to swear folks in. There's no special expertise required. After you've had a chance to listen to the public comment, ask questions, as you may wish to, to the staff or to the applicant, I might suggest kind of gauging the time, doing a straw poll among yourselves to see if you think you're ready to proceed. Possible options, if there are still folks who would like to comment, you may wish to continue the public hearing to another date. We've tentatively identified June 4 for that purpose, if you need it. If you're ready to proceed, I'll come back to the podium, and we'll walk through those options together. There's always another option, you'd like more information, something of that sort, and we'll deal with that if we come to it. Okay, just a little bit of reminder from the plan view, here's the subject property. I find this helpful. You see the colors from the zoning districts overlaid here. What's important to try to get your sense of where you are is, here is the car mill complex, here is teeter, Fitch Lumber, Southern States, and this is the new Shelton Station project. And so here's the project right here. So it gives you a sense of how this is really a transitional point for the town. Not only is you're still feeling a little bit of that historic mill town for Carrboro, but also as you're beginning to leave the commercial core and start to head into our residential neighborhoods. So if you've read your materials, you know the project, just a quick set of data points about the project, location is at 400 North Greensboro Street. The project is, or the property is relatively small, .37 acres. The current zoning, again, corporate town. The proposed zoning district is B1G, so general business conditional. These are both commercial districts. So what you're looking at really is an opportunity to increase residential density. Both districts have an opportunity to have residential uses, and so that's the main difference. What is notable about this being a conditional district, it's been a while since we've really talked through the difference between a general or conventional rezoning to a conditional district, is that they will be losing all of the corporate town uses, and they will be gaining only those B1G districts that they're selecting. And in this case, they've actually asked for eight, and staff has suggested one other one that seems to be of benefit. We'll talk about that in just a minute, and the applicant seemed okay with that. Again, as a conditional district, in addition to just to identifying those specific uses, there's also a site plan that goes with that. So you're approving a specific project, and the conditions, which include the site plan and a number of conditions that are on the rezoning ordinance, are become binding to the project, as well as the subsequent permit, which in this case would be a special use permit A that would go back to the town council. So a second public hearing, but the overall appearance of the project, the uses, the type of building, the location of parking, and so forth, would be determined as part of the conditional use permit review. I'm sorry, as part of the rezoning. Okay, we'll get into the site plan, and I'll let the applicant do the deeper dive to describe the proposal. There's actually another sheet in the packet, the one right before this, which is labeled as the rezoning sheet. I was having difficulty pulling that into a presentation, so we'll use this one instead. You can see the basic site data, three stories. It's a little bit less than that 14,000 square feet. The request is for seven units between one and two bedrooms, and then we've identified these additional potential commercial uses. And as you may recall, the project originally included a small commercial component, and so what they have proposed is to build the building such that the first story could be converted to commercial use in the future. And by including these uses as part of the rezoning, it gives them that flexibility in the future. The permit can always be modified, but they don't have to go back through the full rezoning process. They have offered a payment as opposed to providing a physical affordable unit. That could be challenging for a small project. Because it's B1G, the downtown livability amenities kick in rather than open space and recreation. They've identified 10 parking spaces. This was based on their original proposal and the idea that there might be some commercial in it. As you will note, when we get to the conditions, the number of spaces hasn't been locked in. So this gives them a little bit of flexibility for the project to work. They have offered EV charging and E bike charging, and again, proximity to transit. And so this would be the way into the project and then out by way of Parker Street. So again, conditions are associated with the rezoning ordinance. These are in your packet as Attachment B. We'll just go through these quickly. This isn't verbatim. This is just kind of a summary. As always, condition number one is, I don't want to say boilerplate, but it's a template type of a condition that spells out what items are determined as part of the rezoning and which items will be determined as part of the subsequent permit. And as I think it should be clear, let me turn to include the audience as well, with the conditional rezoning, what you're really looking at is an illustrative plan. The real detail for full compliance with the ordinance comes with the permit. So there are certain matters, such as full stormwater analysis, things of that sort, that comes with the permit phase, not with the rezoning. What we do look at for the rezoning, and it does go through an agency review process, is to make sure that there isn't anything that would not comply with the ordinance when we get to that step. So the residential cap we've talked about, and we've also talked about the potential conversion to commercial use of the ground floor, and I've listed out the uses here. That ninth use that I alluded to, this is for the neighborhood cafe, and this would be subject to it being approved and available for use in this district that you'll consider later, later in the year at the June public hearing. And then to continue these conditions, the applicant has identified some of the following building and environmental features. I'll let Jim speak to those in detail, as well as a higher level of stormwater management. And again, we talked about the Affordable Housing Fund, the EV charging, and so forth. Based on the height requirements for the downtown protection overlay, they have agreed that the perla, which you'll see in just a minute, would not be enclosed, so that would not become kind of a fourth story. Condition number nine is purposefully in italics, because this is one that we've had some discussion on, and I'll let the applicant speak to that. I believe they, at this point, feel that they can meet all but this underlying portion related to the sidewalk, and so I'll let them speak to that in their presentation. So again, rezoning, one of the elements of a rezoning and a text amendment is to see how this relates to our long-range vision. For Carrboro, it's the comprehensive plan. Carrboro connects. There's, I won't go through all of these. This is in your packet. But I think the key elements here, a commitment to affordable housing, some environmental components or features, both for the building and for the site, certainly for transportation and mobility, the inclusion of E features, as well as its location in close proximity to downtown and transit, economic sustainability, and that it would retain its commercial zoning district, and the potential for commercial uses at some time in the future. In terms of land use, I mean, clearly, it's a bigger building than what's there now, and it's a different look. And so that's, I think, a discussion item that you talked through as part of the comprehensive plan. In terms of your procedural notes, and we've talked about this already, this is a legislative public hearing, so you have to receive, or legislative decision, you have to receive public comment. The advisory, almost, I think, all of the advisory boards did review this and have comments in your packet. If you would, again, review the conditions, there's an opportunity for you to suggest modifications in consultation with the applicant. These do have to be mutually agreed upon. And then finally, the ultimate question before the council, always for rezoning, is the public benefit. And with that, I will turn this over to the applicant, and then I'll come back after the public comment period.
All right. Thank you, Tina. So we'll hear from the applicant now.
It's good to see you all again. I'm Jim Spencer with JSA Architects Brewer Lane in Carrboro. I'm here tonight representing Sam Mitchell, who's one of the owners of Bison Lodge LLC, the owner of this property. He's here with us tonight. And also Ryan Fitzsimmons from my office is here. He's here with us tonight, and, and also Ryan Fitzsimmons from my office is here. First want to say welcome to the new manager. We're excited to be here representing Sam tonight on this project. So this is a very different project from the, the one I saw you last time for, small infill project on a .366 acre lot, as Tina described, existing zoning CT. And as you could see from that map on the, the colors represented there, there's been a conditional rezone for the Shelton Station project previously, and then you've got Southern States and Carmill uses to the south of the project. The mill, the mill house fabric largely is retained on, on the other side of, the west side of North Greensboro here. This is a reasonably small project, but I, I feel a very important one for the town, and the reason for that is that implementation of the, of the Carboro connects comprehensive plan is, is going to be done in, in a variety of ways over the years, I feel like, but the opportunity to get a redevelopment project on a small lot that retains this kind of reasonable, you know, small pedestrian scale is really important here. It's also, it's not a developer project, it's some, some guys who have lived here previously and want to have a home here again, and are intending to be residents of Carboro. They're not trying to max out the square footage on the site, or the number of units on the site, or anything like that. They're trying to build a, you know, really high-quality building within walkable and bikeable distance of the amenities the town has and, and will have in the future. So I, I want to go through a fairly brief presentation about the project as, as designed, and, and as we've worked with the town staff and different departments and boards on how this project has evolved. And then I'll take any questions, and then you hear from the public, and we'll go from there. This, this is a rendering of the building. Sam's an architect in Connecticut, and so he's, he's done a lot of the schematics on this project, and, you know, I feel like he's, he's designed a building that here that's got a civic presence and is very pedestrian-friendly, but also will blend in to the historic fabric. It's, it's got a lot of large fenestration and brick details reminiscent of the, of the mill. It'll be street up, up front on Greensboro Street, and as we showed, access to the project is off Parker. It'd be a very small vehicular load on this project, just due to the number of units in, in the project, again. So you kind of see the, the three-story massing, which is really two stories, and then a step back at the street to reduce the scale, this kind of roofed, occupiable rooftop element. There'll be some new, new plantings on the property. We will be proposing to remove the existing house. We have reached out to Community Home Trust and the Jackson Center, and, and all about giving the house away to them if they can find an appropriate lot for it. If, if not, then the house will be salvaged, there'll be pieces salvaged from it. As Tina pointed out, the, the building's about, it's actually closer to 12,000 heated square feet. There is some outdoor space elements in the, in the project, a garden space in the rear, and some, some outdoor gathering space on the south, which you can see on this rendering at the, at the right side there. The building's about 36 feet tall, which is pretty comparable to the size of the, the mill and the Shelton Station project that's to its north. Again, the, the idea for the project is to have new residents downtown that, that really, you know, want to, want to be in this downtown location. There has been a lot of discussion about the commercial element, and, you know, we, we do understand the importance of, in the district of having commercial space. They, they felt this time it would be better served to have the residents on the ground spending money at the other businesses, but it does have the adaptability built into the building to be converted into a small commercial space if, if that becomes a viable option. I'm gonna just point out a few key features of the, of the project, and so we talked about the, the size and the rezoning. There was discussion about rezoning the lot to R2 rather than B1G, but staff and we as the applicant felt better suited for a downtown commercial zone, and it's also surrounded by a, a conditional zone to the north here with Shelton Station, so I think that does make sense. The on-site parking is for 10 vehicles, essentially one per unit, plus an accessible space and a couple of guest spaces. We have less than 5,000 square feet of, of net increase in impervious, so by ordinance would not have to treat stormwater, but we are going to anyway, and so we, we will be detaining the 25-year storm post-development, and that's, that's what the staff has asked for, and, and we're fine to do that. It'll be through a combination of rain garden and pervious paver system. The details to be kind of finalized in the SUP. The town, both emergency staff and the public work staff asked for an increase in the right-of-way on Parker in order to accommodate emergency vehicles and just basically not have it, have two-way traffic be realistic on that section of Parker, and we've agreed to that. We can talk a little bit more about that later. The, Tina mentioned that, and that condition nine, and we're fine to increase the street section. That really won't be fully implemented into other, you know, projects there, developed down Parker and on the, the Southern State side, but we'll do our piece of it, and we do not, not necessarily interested in, in dedicating all the right-of-way on that side up, up through a sidewalk as well. We'd like to have it on the street section, and then if we have sidewalk on Parker, it would be on the property, but we can talk about that a little more. Payment in lieu for affordable housing per the town's ordinance. Everybody here values affordable housing in Carboro, and, but due to the small number of units on this, I think it's, it's better suited to provide the, the funds to, to that As Tina mentioned, there'll be extensive landscaping and sustainability features in the project. That, you know, includes the EV stations, bike charging, very high-efficiency building, bike, bicycle parking, downtown livability amenities, and we'll have to meet the three of the town's seven goals in that area to get the extra density from five to seven units. Entry is, is off Parker Street, and again, I, I think, you know, one of the primary comments, public comments that Sam and crew heard early on was, you know, concern about traffic on Greensboro, which is already heavily trafficked at times, and, and so I think one of the reasons, one of the reasons to choose not having a commercial component at this point is to put as little new traffic onto that street as possible. They're intending to come, you know, be here and not really drive around much, because you can walk everywhere from here. But of course, we do have this small amount of parking behind the building. As I, as I kind of mentioned before, that, why, why I think this is a good project is, is because it's a reasonable-scale project on a small lot that, that has little impact on existing infrastructure in town. It's, we have all the utilities there we need. As the town redevelops, there's going to be a lot of projects which attempt or do cobble together properties to make a much larger project, and I think the, keeping the character of the town with a, a variety of size project is, is going to be important. So I like a, you know, a three-story building in this location, I think it makes sense, and I think you're going to get people living here who will really support the town's goals. I won't spend much time on the site plan, as, as Tina kind of gave you some background on it, but this shows the kind of location of the building here, street-facing. It's got this kind of inset recessed facade area in the center for pedestrians. You see some street, street trees on all the sides of the building. The parking with the pervious, pervious pavers in the, on the east side of the building there in the rear, and this kind of garden space for the residents back here. The access, and this is the place where the increased right-of-way would occur, which would essentially mean we dedicate a small portion of right-of-way on that side of the property to move the curb and gutter, well, there's not, it's gravel road now, but we'd curb and gutter farther back on that side. Of course, we'd have a 10-foot sidewalk per downtown standards on the street, and I think that gives you a, a good basics on the, the project itself. I want to talk just about a couple of quick things that are, things that either came up in joint board review or in the original neighborhood information meeting that I've touched on before, but just to, just to let you know that we have not ignored them, and we are paying attention to what people have said about, and so stormwater is one, and we've already mentioned that. The, the commercial element, I think, is a, a thing that, that we've, we've thought a lot about, and my, my feeling on it is really that the, to, to be a good mixed-use district in, in downtown, you can have those, those mix of uses in a variety of ways, and you don't necessarily have to, to solve them all on, in each project that moving forward. You have some projects nearby here, including Carmill and the new 203 project, that either have all commercial or, or all residential, and so, you know, while, while we really understand the town's desire to, that having this interaction and mix of uses is, is a way to have a vibrant downtown, feel like on a building this size, that, that could be something that, that doesn't happen in the project now, but gets converted later. So we're, we're open to talking about it, but to us, that makes sense at this scale, that you have some projects that are, put the people on the street to spend money at these businesses, and other, other projects have a bigger commercial component. Shelton Station is a much larger project with 100 and some units, and, you know, having the commercial element there does make sense to me, but that, that's kind of our, our thought about it now, we're open to talking about it. The, I think that, that gives you a pretty good overview. These other drawings in there, the technical drawings regarding stormwater and, and other things in the set, I'll be happy to answer any questions about them you have at this point. As Tina pointed out, those are the, the kind of fine details, those will be worked out with staff later, but I have some just floor plates of the building, which basically show you that heated square footage that we talked about before. These are some elevations of building, just showing you this kind of articulated facade. I think it's, I think it'll be a handsome building and, and fit into the, the fabric well in between a, a new multifamily project and the, the commercial Carmill District. This is kind of the, the rear kind of residence entry side, street front with this kind of colonnade and, and balcony there. These are just some renderings of the, a model kind of showing the, the massing of the building, and per the, per the downtown architectural standards, you know, there's breaks in the facade to keep it from being a, a long kind of monotonous facade, and, and then step backs in the height. With that, I think I'll stop and answer any questions you guys have.
I want to hear from the public first, and then come back around. Yeah, you may take, take the seat, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you very much.
Come back around. Let's hear from Harold Kopich, Kopich, I'm sorry. Am I pronouncing it right? Okay. Come on up. You have three minutes, sir, the timer.
I'm getting close.
Yes, exactly. And address your comments to the council. Thank you.
My name's Harold Kopich, I live at 506 North Greensboro Street, Cedar Court, number seven. I started visiting here in 1975. A quick note, when I was walking from, when I could walk, I could walk from there to the Carmill Mall. I was walking one day when 400 Greensboro Street was still occupied, and the two houses to the left were still occupied, and their lots went all the way back to the railroad tracks. As I was walking, a herd of eight or nine deer came from about that property that ran back from the railroad tracks between the 400 Greensboro Street, the street next door. I stopped tractor-trailer truck that was going to Farmers Exchange, which is now Southern States, so the deer could cross. You don't see those anymore. Okay, the next thing is going on to the business. First of all, is this building that you're putting up going to be handicapped, accessible, and available, and for people who need to use elevators versus stairs, and getting parking and so forth like that? And I'll start with trying to go a list of one side of the street to the other side of the street as to what's there already. I don't know all the buildings' names and so forth like that. We start at Carmill Mall and Weaver Street Market. Now Weaver Street Market doesn't face it, but the trucks that go to Weaver Street Market have to go that driveway between Carmill Mall and their buildings to turn in, turn around, go out, block up Greensboro Street to do that, and they have to get their stuff into Weaver Street and out of there on that drive. Then all the stops in Carmill Mall have to have access to that north and south entrance onto Greensboro Street. And some of those are mainly would be Harris Teeter and CVS, but you have all the others in the shops in there. They must have employee parking, they must have customer parking, they must have vehicle service parking, and so forth like that. Delivery parking of all types of deliveries. Then you go to Shelton Station Apartments, coming down, going north, and you have this little Farmers Exchange and Southern States. Then you go to North Greensboro Street, which is now the one in question. Then you go to Fitch Lumber, the drive that goes, they have a little house there, and then go down the drive to their lot, which they drive tractor-trailer trucks all the time in there, all the day, and they have to turn around sometimes or wait on Greensboro Street to get in there and get out of there. And also tractors, trailers on the back of vans, SUVs, and cars that go in there all the time, load lumber and goods and all that stuff. They have to come in and back out of that, and whatever they have to do, have to get out of that roadway. Then you go to Cedar Court, which I live in, which is 50 units. You have to have moving vans in there all the time, on the, on whenever the leases run out, they move. They can use a U-Haul or a full-size moving van, that has to be in and out on Greensboro Street, that's the only way to do it. Then you have to go to Pleasant Drive, which is a multiple streets off Pleasant Drive, go back and there are houses of all kinds in there. And people have to get in and out of there. Only way to get out of it is on Pleasant, I mean, on North Greensboro Street. Then across, the next would be the Oak Street Apartments, which is that street down near the roundabout. There's a bunch of apartments in there, and houses and so forth. Then you go to the roundabout. Then the other side, you have, starting out with the dentist office, which is a single-level unit, which is going to be next on the changeover because it doesn't surprise the property tax income you want. You know it's going to have to be changed. That's next. Then it goes Fitch Lumber, huge in-and-out processing of all kinds of vehicles, all sizes of vehicles, tractor-trailers, cars with trailers and trucks with trailers, individual customers, employee parking, all has to come in and out of Greensboro Street, that one entrance, and out. Then you have to go to the hairdresser on the corner. The only way to get in and out of that is on the Greensboro Street, in and out, and so forth. That's the only way in and out of that place. Then you have to come to Shelter Street, which goes down to the school, which the school buses have to go there, people with carrying their children to school have to go in and out of that street, and the bicyclists and the pedestrians with pets have to use that street, or the crosswalk, and/or the crosswalk that go there to get them in and out of there safely, of that school riding.
Mr. Kopich, are you, are you almost finished?
Yes, yes, I am. Anyway, all of these people, and I have to use all their vehicles of all type sizes to get it out there, emergency vehicles of all sizes, and to use to get in there and so forth, and it's already so crowded, so dangerously crowded, I think this would be a lot of things that would be even detrimental to the, to the community as far as space and safety, and traffic would be a nightmare. Thank you so much, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Kopich, thank you. Thank you for coming out. That's okay. I see the address, but can't quite make out the name. 205 Waterside? I'm sorry. Dallas Priggin. Come on up, Mr. Priggin.
I just wanted to speak in favor of the project. I just, I'm familiar with the guys that are doing it. It's going to be a really top-notch thing. It's going to be a special place for people to live. It's, I'm interested in one of the units. I live a little bit closer outside of town, and the people that want to do this are people that are tightly clo- tied to Carboro and Chapel Hill, and it's, it's going to be a really, it, it's a unique opportunity to do something, a really high-quality project, and it's not that many units. It's small, you're taking, you've got a building that's, you know, and not the best of shape. It needs to be, you know, it's going to, it's really something that you, it's a real unique opportunity for us to, to put in a really nice building, and a really, really nice place to live. I just want to be a part.
Thank you for your comments. Martha McCabe. Martha, Ms. McCabe, come on up.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members. I live at 430 North Greensboro, which is Shelton Station, and I'm in my fifth year living there, and I'm very happy that at some point in the past, y'all approved that project because it's a great place to live. And I think that many of my neighbors have regarded the plans for 400 with a mixture of curiosity and admiration, and perhaps a little envy. It looks like a very nice project. The only thing I'm here to raise with you is the question about the definition of public improvements, such as increasing the depth of the sidewalk relative to the tree that's there. And I, there is a large tree that is now athwart the sidewalk, as many of you know who walk up and down that part of Greensboro, and the tree has about a 33-inch diameter, about a, almost nine-foot circumference. The canopy is about 85 feet from one end to the other, and it extends all the way over to the curb on the west side of Greensboro. So, in consideration of the design elements of the proposal for the sidewalk, and the mention of extensive landscaping, I would suggest that there is already a really massive and beautiful tree there, could use some work. It's probably been neglected for some time, but I hope that as the council proceeds to review and act on this application, that that tree is taken into consideration. You've got a nice big tree there. It shades a lot, and it adds a lot of beauty to the neighborhood, and certainly a lot of habitat to the creatures who live in that part of town. So, that said, I just ask that as you review the project, you remember the, the very proud definition of the, of Carboro as Tree City, USA, and try to keep that in mind as the project is reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Come on up, William. Come on up.
Hey, my name is, my name is William Derry, and I live at 405 North Greensboro, which is right across the street from this proposed development, and I am conflicted here. And I said this at the informational meeting. That property has probably been vacant for 18 years. Something needs to be done with it. I'm not sure, for me, I'm not sure this is it. I think this is a little heavy-handed, being 36 feet tall on that third of an acre lot. I question that. I'm, I'm still so conflicted with this. When we, someone spoke of traffic issues earlier, that's my greatest concern, is the possible congestion that could happen at the busy corner of Shelton Street. Some people are turning into Shelton Station, some are turning down to the elementary school. And I know that seven apartments don't seem like a lot, but the owners also suggested the possibility of a restaurant or bar on the first floor in, somewhere in the future. They're holding that possibility open. This is my concern. If congestion ever happens, we know DOT is going to step in. DOT is in the business of, of moving traffic, and if they see an issue there, if we bring them into talking about Parker Street, if they are concerned about congestion in that area, they will step in and do something. I don't know if y'all remember, on the original plans for Shelton Station, DOT wanted to widen North Greensboro Street and add turn lanes. And that would have put, I was out there measuring again today to make sure, that would have put the edge of North Greensboro Street like 17 feet off my house. That's from here to, less than from here to Mr. Koppich. And that's off my front, off my front door. And if y'all remember what happened last August 2023 to Breakaway Restaurant, a distracted driver coming down Greensboro Street, I don't know how it happened, but drove through the front of Breakaway Restaurant. They probably stand 20 to 30 feet off of North Greensboro Street. If that had happened on the west side, some, the car would have probably been in my, in my house. And I know we can't live in fear of that happening, if we live our lives like that. But I think here we're taking the safety of these small milts. I think there's two or three mill houses that'll be affected, and I think we're taking safety into, not into question. And that is my concern. Let's see if I had any other thing to bore y'all with. And again, it's not just my house, it's two or three other houses. There's one on the south side of me and two on the north that could be affected if DOT was to step in there. And I, I would just hope for the want of a few more apartments in Carboro, do we really want to give up safety of surrounding old mill houses? I would hesitate. If I, I would hesitate to have children in that house if that was to happen. Today's of me having children are long gone, though. So, I would just ask that y'all consider that when taking this into consideration. I'm glad that somebody's planning to do something with that. I, I said that back in the community meeting, but I don't know if this is it. For me, it's not it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Derry. I have Jim Spencer next, but no. Yeah, you were just. Sam Mitchell and Eddie Mitchell. Let's see what I have. Okay. Who's coming up? Hey, Sam.
Hi, I'm Sam Mitchell. I'm one of the owners of the property. And I, the, the only thing I wanted to say is that the reason that we're proposing this building is my co-owner and I want to live in Carboro. We're Carolina graduates, we have friends who never left the area, we have other friends who have already come back. My co-owner and I plan to come back, and we already have of the seven units in the building, five spoken for of friends and family. So, we're not developers. We want to be residents of this town, and this is the way we want to live in this town, in a small building, in walking distance to all the amenities of Carboro, and that's one of the things that's drawing us here. I have my son Eddie, who has already moved to, to North Carolina from Chicago in anticipation of my wife and I relocating here, so it's a place we're committed to, and, and I think that maybe puts a different spin on, on what this project is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. So Eddie is not going to.
He's not going to speak.
He's not going to speak. Yeah, come on up, Eddie. You want to, you, you have something you want to say, or? Well, we already know that. Any extra comments that you'd like to share? No? Okay, so I have Mr. Priggin again, so he's, so you're good. Okay, so that is the end of our public comment. Folks that have signed up, anyone else from the audience? Maybe not signed up. Okay. Council members, it's on us. Questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Who do we want?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Spencer.
So we'll bring Mr. Spencer up. We'll start with the applicant. Mr. Spencer.
Mr. Spencer, just, just to sort of elaborate on a theme that we heard in public comment, there is a large old tree there. There is also a sidewalk, there's also a building. I know that that, that we are all crossing our fingers that that particular tree would survive the construction of Shelton Station. Could you sort of give us the background around your decision about why the existing trees need to come out? I'm just.
Sure.
This is more to sort of clarify for folks the decision-making process around that.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. So, like, like many lots in, in Carboro and Chapel Hill, there's large willow oaks downtown that have massive canopies and massive tree root zones. They are also largely in that circumstance near the kind of end of their life, and so we've had, David Swanson is our landscape architect and has kind of analyzed the trees there. That particular oak, and it is a beauty, and we do value it, but it renders the site undevelopable just by its root zone, unfortunately. So, our thought is that the trade of, of having this building on site is a good one, and that we will supplement the site with beautiful, you know, more urban landscaping. David, as, as you guys all know, is, practiced for 40 years here, and will implement native species and more appropriate kind of street trees that will, you know, will do well and will allow you to use that sidewalk kind of uninhibited and, and with full accessibility. But the, the bottom line is just too much root zone in that, in, in that to, to survive construction. We, we have had projects before, as you know, where if the, if the tree is, has been kind of constrained by existing conditions, an existing building or walk or something, sometimes they can survive, but that, the roots for that, we, we've kind of looked at it with our arborist, and it, it would not survive the construction. So, we'll, we'll be replacing with multiple trees on the site. We have a shade requirement to meet under the ordinance, so that, that's the thinking of it, and, and, you know, I, I'm very sensitive to it. You know, I live downtown, and I, my office is downtown, and, and trees are a big part of what, what makes the scenery and the, the character of the town, so, but that's the decision-making process we've been through.
Thank you very much. I have, I think, two other quick questions, if I might. The, the payment in lieu you're doing, that comes along with your, just, your, when you're wanting to move up from five units to seven, is that what's triggering the, the consideration for affordable housing?
Well, the, the, meeting the 15% goal, and in, in this calculation, having the, the density bonus, we're, we're trying to get seven units because they want seven units in the building, and we're using the density bonuses from those seven items as a way to get there, but the, the affordable housing payment in lieu, we've worked with the staff on that, and so the calculation of, it's, I think, 1.05 units technically as 15% of the seven to equal that payment in lieu that we would provide.
Thank you so much. And last question, I know we sort of heard some, some tension and comments, including from advisory boards, where some, some boards were questioning the inclusion of commercial, and other boards were urging you to include more commercial.
Yeah.
Is that how you arrived at the idea to not build any commercial but include it in the uses?
Yes, I, I think that's a fair assessment. The, you know, in a building this size, currently, the ordinance requires parking for that use as well, and so, so as not to overburden North Greensboro further, that was part of the calculation. You know, the, the other is simply that these particulars don't really want to be in the landlord business, they're going to, intending to live here and, and be downtown. So, yeah, I, I'm a little torn by that, too. I, I generally favor mixed-use buildings and mixed-use zones. This particular zone has a lot of mix of uses already, and I do believe you're going to get, as, as was pointed out by the public, you're going to get some redevelopment on larger lots adjacent that are likely to have a bigger commercial component and be able to park them a little more effectively than this. So, that's, that's where we, you know, I understand the Economic Sustainability Commission's point of view, which is commercial tax-based. It's been something we've talked about as a community for, you know, many years, and in this, you know, in this setting and in this scale, that's, that's how we came to that decision not to have it at this time. It will be the type of building that has, you know, the storefront, that has this outside space available to the building, so if, if a time came where those parking regulations were modified somewhat, or, and/or a use became something they wanted to do, they're, they're open to it, but it's not in their plans right now.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Those are my questions.
Go ahead. Council member, Haven O'Donnell.
How you doing?
Hey, Randy.
I, I went through the material, and I missed the joint review, so if I'm asking something that was answered there, please just work with me here. I, I wanted to get some more information about energy efficiency, whether or not the EV use, solar panels, maybe geothermal, the LEED certification. What can you tell me?
I think that there's, there's heavy interest, Sam, as an architect, in, in building the most sustainable building he can. Haven't made a ton of decisions on systems yet, but I think the idea is that we're definitely committed to having the EV charging for bikes and car vehicles there. I think they'll have an extremely high-efficiency energy system, no matter what they decide on. The geothermal may be difficult with the previous paver system that we have to kind of put in the lot to handle stormwater, but there, we're, we're still looking into that. I, I definitely think solar is on the table. Haven't, haven't repriced the building in the new building environment here to, to make all those decisions, but it'll be an extremely efficient building with, you know, a really tight envelope, good windows and all that stuff. I think the, you know, the, the location itself and the fact that they're really going to drive very little here is one of the biggest, you know, green features of the building, personally.
What, what are the ceiling heights expected?
Well, if, if you can kind of imagine that that 36 is, is roughly 12 foot for, per floor plate, but it'll probably be a little taller on the first, and then a little lesser on those upper, but 10 feet, I think ceilings in those units is what they would be shooting for, plus structure.
The, you know, Carboro had, was part of the Solarize the Triangle program in the last two years. I don't know if that program is continuing, but I would like you guys to look into it, especially if you're going to have ceilings of that size. The HVAC system is going to be working really hard.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
So, I had a couple of questions. So, the first question about the payment in lieu, what, and this is a staff question probably, and I don't know if there's the answer tonight, but I'd like to know what that payment in lieu amount is. Let us.
Yeah, I, I asked this question of Van Marie yesterday.
Maybe she doesn't have the answer as of yet, or any staff member, really. Uh-huh, yeah, that'll be good. Thank you, Tina. I see the formula here by multiplying the average of median home sale prices.
Yeah, so the fee for this is actually identified in the fee schedule. And right now it's a little bit more than forty-eight thousand. I just wrote that down before I came down to the public hearing. I have that sheet in front of me. The reason why the condition is written the way it is is because the expectation is that that price may go up just a little bit between now and when the applicants are ready to move forward with the special use permit. And so the idea is that it would be what that value is at the time of the special use permit. So at that point, it would most likely be slightly higher than the forty-eight thousand it is now.
Okay. Thank you, Tina. And I guess for the applicant, you know, I know in the past, and realizing that you're not developers, but I know in the past, some developers have shown interest in going above and beyond what, what the formula is saying. And so I was just wondering if there would be interest in that. I mean, it goes into affordable housing, special revenue fund, so.
Yeah, I understand. We, we haven't really talked about that, but we, we're, you know, we're up into discussing it, that, you know, with the, the small number of units, obviously, that, you know, every, everything goes into one pot or another, but I, you know, we certainly be willing to talk about it.
Thank you. And, and the second one, all of us have heard the concerns this evening from folks that live currently in the community about safety, traffic, and just a general concern potentially about the project. And so you've heard it, you know, because you, you were sitting here. And so is there anything that you want to add, you know, in reference to what those concerns are that you have heard here tonight? Just realizing that it's seven units, but, but still there, there is that concern for folks who live along that, from the folks that live along the corridor.
Sure. And, and, you know, obviously we, we understand people's concern and change is, is hard sometimes. And, and so I, I think that the idea is that part of the reason for, for them to propose a building of this size and scale is to mitigate those concerns by the, the very few new residents that are gonna be here. It's a, it's a small lot, but you're replacing a, a single-family dwelling with a multifamily dwelling, while really, I think, placing very little burden on the transportation infrastructure that was talked about. You're entering on Parker, not having a new curb cut onto Greensboro there. You certainly, they've had to, to, you know, bear the burden of, of Shelton Station. But there's also, as, as was pointed out, a lot of good to having these new residences downtown. And so, you know, for me, I, I think that that, the ability for other people to move into the community that really want to and have those, those advantages outweighs those. I think safety, a better, more accessible sidewalk in front of the building, better lighting on the site, you know, urban plantings and, and other amenities. I think that's, I think it's a, an infill project that, that really does address the, the comprehensive plan without kind of overburdening the system.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And this last question, it may be for Tina. And so the, it's not the basement. It would be the first floor of the building? I guess that, that may be commercial at, at some point, not, not at the beginning. The ground floor, right? And so I think I did hear some concern about that. And so when that time comes, if it comes, what would that process look like? And I think that would be for, for Tina. Thank you.
Sure. So as long as those uses were identified as part of the rezoning.
In the beginning.
Then the applicants could proceed with the modification to the permit, which would be a modification to the special use permit.
Okay.
Obviously whatever building code requirements were needed.
Okay. And that's the ground floor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions. Council members, any other questions? Nobody?
Wanted to just add one more thing for the, the first resident who spoke that the building will be fully accessible, have an elevator and the units will be accessible. So, and, and there'll be accessible entry on, on North Greensboro Street.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Council members, I think we probably are, sounds like we're at a decision point. Am I correct? Go ahead and close the, close the public hearing. And we have Attachment A. Now the consistency.
If I may?
Oh, you, yeah, go ahead, Tina.
So you've closed the public hearing. You might want to take a moment quickly just to review the conditions. Now, there was a question from the applicant about condition number nine, which I can spell out completely, but there was an interest of removing the sidewalk provision. I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit more or if you're comfortable.
I don't think that would hurt. Yeah, let's do that.
Would you like to? I'll bring back the original.
So I, I think the, the short version is that number nine as written and, and our discussions with the staff and with Public Works and the emergency staff, so fire in particular, were an interest in widening that street section on Parker in order to accommodate two-way vehicular traffic and emergency vehicles on that street. The, so I, I think that our, our thought is that we're willing to do that. Adding the sidewalk as part of the right-of-way on the secondary street there. We're, we're interested in potentially putting a sidewalk there, but we'd like to keep that sidewalk out of the right-of-way so that it's still a piece of his property. We'd be giving up nine feet of southern part of the property in order to accommodate the road widening and the sidewalk there. And I think that's a lot. And personally, we, you know, we, the, there is a lot of right-of-way already on Greensboro for, to allow for the, the wider ten-foot sidewalk there. But we'd, we'd kind of like to not give that portion of land away at this point. We could commit to the backing the curb and gutter up in order to increase the street section. But if there's sidewalk that it's privately maintained on that section, that, that condition exists a lot in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Not a question. I was gonna comment on that. Which is that that seems pretty reasonable to me, but I guess I am curious, behind this property on Parker, what are we looking at?
Two houses.
There's, there's two lots behind Parker Street, pardon me, on Parker Street, behind the subject property. One is a house, which I believe is owned by, by the owners of Shelton Station. The second is used as kind of an overflow lot for Southern State, so it has plant materials inside.
Council member first.
I think it makes sense to, to not include the sidewalk within the right-of-way there. I think in part because as we're looking at land use ordinance, one of the things we're gonna be looking at is our street sections. And the, the twenty-foot, I don't know if we're, since we're talking about something with basically three, a total of three lots with access to it. I don't know if that twenty-foot section is still gonna be the standard. And since the applicant is willing to have the sidewalk on the property and maintain privately, that makes, that seems like a good compromise to me.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
If I may, that twenty-foot of pavement was at the request of the fire department. If we proceed on to the procedural notes continued. Believe you're ready to move on to action. The first step would be the consideration of the consistency resolution. If you would, making, in making the motion, if you would read the three sections. You don't need to read all of the text, but just cover those three points.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move the three sections of Attachment, Attachment A, including the consistency statement, Section Two Reasonableness, Section Three, that we approve the proposed amendment with the single alteration that the sidewalk not be included within the right-of-way.
On Parker Street.
On Parker Street. Thank you.
Just be specific.
Catch, thank you, Jason.
All right, thank you.
And I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem now.
And the second part would be if you would approve the draft ordinance and you may wish to again repeat that removal of, of that portion of condition number nine regarding the sidewalk.
Attachment B, one moment. If I may, so Tina, are you looking for this as, as two parts of a single motion?
You can do those motions separately. Oh, I beg your pardon. So the first motion you've made and voted on for the consistency. You can make that as part of your motion for approval of Attachment B.
Thanks. So I'll, if everyone's amenable, I will add adoption of Attachment B to approve the ordinance again with the adjustment to condition nine that we discussed.
And I'll second that one too.
All right. So we have the consistency statement and we, which is Attachment A as well as the draft ordinance, Attachment B. There have been proper movement of motion as well as a second. And we ready for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're done. Thank you, Tina, for the extra assist. So moving on to matters by council members.
Madam Mayor, I have one item. This is just for Councilmember Posada and I to give you a short update on the proceedings of the 203 Project Naming Committee. This committee includes Commissioner Green and Commissioner Richards, as well as staff from Carboro and from Orange County. And we've met to discuss a, oh, thank you, and advocates from, from Friends of the Southern Branch Library to discuss a prop, a process for naming. The major content of our first meeting was reviewing Orange County's facility naming policy. We requested that county and town staff collaborate to develop a very short summary of that rather long policy that could be provided to the public on a website so that we can take public suggestions for names. And so the intent is that there will be, you know, a public announcement of a request for names so that people will be presented with a short version of the policy, asked to submit a name. The committee will then receive those naming suggestions and work from those so that we should have, we should, as the committee should be ready to pass a name on to our respective bodies. We're hoping for before the summer recess, but if not, then we would be ready right when we came back. So well, well ahead of the grand opening.
Sounds good. Councilmember Posada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Frey, for that. I think the only thing that I would add is, from the conversation with staff and the committee, it doesn't seem that there needs to be any formal action from this board in order to move, move with that process. Nonetheless, we are waiting final word. I know that folks, we're gonna speak with the respective attorneys on whether or not, as a council, we need to vote on whether to approve this process or not. But the understanding is given that we have this, the committee has the directive to figure out what names we put before council is within our jurisdiction, I guess is the right word, or whatever, charge, to begin this, this process in, in order to get community input. Nonetheless, if there is a need for an action, Councilmember Frey and I will make sure that the council knows and we can put that before the board sooner rather than later. Ultimately, the process, we're trying to be as inclusive as possible of members of the community as well as folks who have been around, not just Carboro and in this movement, but in Orange County as a whole. So, and appreciation for your trust in us being part of this committee.
All good. And so I do love the community input. I know the Friends of the Library have been very interested and I think have been at the table, a couple of them. And so they'll get the opportunity to weigh in about that name, you know, with the rest of the community. So I appreciate that update. Motion to adjourn. It's been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.